Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Oyster Bay East Norwich Board of Education Meeting. If everyone would please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
As allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Good evening. All correspondents received since the last board meeting has been responded to.
Thank you. I would now like to turn it over to Dr. Yanni for our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Gustaf Giovani, and good evening, everybody. So glad to report to the Board of Education and the entire community that our students are doing very well across the board, and we are a week away from the Thanksgiving break, which came really fast. At this point, I will turn the microphone to Giovanna Lisa for a student report.
Thank you, Dr. Yanni. Good evening, everyone. I am really excited to share with you some of the events that have been happening over the past few weeks and some events that we are going to be excited to look forward to. Firstly, Oyster Bay High School has hosted a food drive where students in each grade could bring preserved foods in order to earn points for their Color Wars teams. The food drive is going to be ending tomorrow, November 19th, and we're excited to see all of the points that all the students got. Additionally, the Wind Ensemble held its first concert, an evening with chamber music, where students played pieces in small groups. It was a really incredible experience and an amazing way to start off the year. We also recently held our first food truck festival. It had a lot of fun activities and some really delicious food. I had some empanadas that were really good. And we had a live band, a local band, where some of our students came to play. It was just a really fun experience. On the same night, we held our OBEN Experience, where people could explore all of what our high school has to offer, like our music and arts wing and our broadcasting room. Last week, we held our Field of Honor Ceremony in order to honor veterans. American flags were displayed on the high school lawn, a local veteran spoke at the ceremony, and our amazing band played a beautiful rendition of the Star Spangled Banner. It was a wonderful ceremony that honored the service and sacrifice of our veterans. Last Friday, Oyster Bay High School held a district-wide college shirt day, where students and staff wore college merchandise in order to show some school spirit. During the weekend, Oyster Bay High School held its school play, Puffs. It was a truly amazing production. I loved watching my friends and my sister shine on the stage both nights. Let's give them a round of applause. They were so good. Thank you so much to all who participated. Your hard work and your dedication towards this production is truly commemorable. Oyster Bay High School also hosted its 10th-grade college trip, which is still going today. Students have been seeing multiple colleges, really exciting ones. I'm pretty sure they went to Georgetown, one of them, and they will be returning tomorrow evening. As for events upcoming, next week on the 24th will be our TRIM and Art Honor Society induction ceremonies. Congratulations to all the students who will be inducted this year. And this is all the news that I have to share with you tonight. Have an amazing, wonderful Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Giovanna. You did a great job. So this past weekend, we had four student athletes compete in the New York State Class C Cross Country Championship. We had Vlad Morales. He finished in 89th place. Amelin Zeller finished in 44th place. Liana Altamirano finished 20th, receiving all-state honors. And Zach Green finished 6th, also receiving all-state honors. I want to thank Coach Carter and Coach Norton for all the hard work and dedication, and I want to thank Coach Carter for attending the state championship this weekend. So congratulations. The second-graded students from TR have a wonderful tradition. On the day of President Roosevelt's birthday, they visit his grave. This annual ceremony is a significant local event that is organized by town historian John Hammond, and students receive a little bit of history about the president and about our town. Our town supervisor, Joe Saladino, legislator, Gadsen, Tom Clark, and many other community members attended this event. The second-graded sang "American Beautiful" under the direction of teacher Brendan Murphy, and then "Taps" was played by Julia De Angelis and Tristan Constant. It's a wonderful tradition. Students have a great time and also learn about the history in our town. I want to thank Ms. Small for coordinating this event, which was great and something that I look for every year. Vernon and Roosevelt put a wonderful show on Halloween. Students and staff had the traditional parade. All the students were dressed, and at TR, we used that beautiful walkway that we just finished, which was great because the night before it rained pretty much all night, and Vernon used the parking lot. So everybody was dressed, even the principals were dressed. So Ms. Small was dressed as Rami from K-Pop, Demon Hunters. Did I get that right, Dever? You're right. Yeah. And Ms. Smith was Velma from Scooby Doo. But I think that the winner was Ms. Deverat Small. I'm sorry. Congratulations. Great job. I didn't dress up this year. Maybe I'll do it next year. In line with the Board of Education goals, the Guidance Department has been working very hard under the direction of Dr. Dianka, which is on the school trip, so I'm sure that she's listening. So I want to thank her in helping our students, together with all the counselors, to figure out the next step after Oyster Bay High School. On November 12th, the High School Guidance Department facilitated an onsite admission in partnership with Long Island University, LIU. During the visit, eight students received immediate offers and admission. In addition, these students have collected award about $772,000 in merit-based scholarship over the four-year period. This event reflects our continued commitment to provide meaningful post-secondary planning experience and expanding college access for our students. So I want to thank the Guidance Department and congratulate the students. I'd like to give the Board and the community a follow-up from the last meeting. So the first one is the painting and the gymnasium and the overall renovation that is taking place. So if I can ask Ms. Dolan to put up a quick presentation and maybe click through the slides. We have completed the work of the painting of the gymnasium, which looks beautiful, and we also have completed the banner renovation. So if you look at the first slide, this was presented, I believe, sometimes in the spring of this year. So those were the banners that we have stored away, and we put a survey up, so the survey is up until December 12th. So if we go to the next slide, this is a more close-up of the banners, the old one. And now, if you go to the next one, some of them, obviously, I've been there for a long time, and this is the way it looked without the painting. And then, if you go to the next slide, this is the new look. Those are the new banners. We're reviewing everything. We're making sure that every championship and everything is up there. So we made sure we hung all the banners. The painting is completely done, so we have a little bit more work to do, but the gymnasium looks beautiful, and we truly want to thank you, the Booster Club, for the wonderful donation that really boosted up the entire gymnasium and the way it looks. So thank you so much for all that. So the survey has been posted online. If you have any questions, please call my office, call me. I would be more than happy to direct where the survey is posted. So far, we have 31 responses about what we're doing with the old banners, so looking forward to the outcome. The athletic center issue that we discussed at the last meeting has been finalized, and the work will be completed soon. And the last one is, I would like to provide clarity on an item asked by a community member at our last meeting about our recent '24-'25 audit report. First, I'm pleased to share that the district received a positive audit with no findings reflecting our strong financial health. As part of our commitment to transparency, I want to explain the audit adjustment mentioned in the report and presentation to reassure the community that it is not a cause of concern. The adjustment was simply a timing correction, which caused an accounting adjustment related to laptops purchased with voter-approved funds. These laptops were delivered in several batches, two in June '25 and '26 of this year, and one in early July '2. Our office had initially recorded the entire purchase in July, but the auditors correctly pointed out that the June deliveries should be expensed in the '24-'25 fiscal year. We agree and made the accounting adjustment. This was simply a simple timing correction, not a financial error or a finding of concern, and it had no impact on our district's overall financial position or the positive results of the audit. Tonight, you will see on the agenda a recommendation from me to the Board of Education regarding Zach Nyberg. Zach, you changed your position. I couldn't see where you were. So Zach Nyberg for a recommendation. It is with immense pride that I recommend we grant tenure to Zachary Nyberg, the Executive Director for Business and Finance. During his time at Oyster Bay East Norwich, Zach became an essential component of our district and my team. He is the definition of a quiet, strong leader, working tirelessly, behind-the-scenes, and never looking for recognition on the spotlight. Zach leads the business department with a passion, knowledge, and a tremendous pride that is evident in everything he does. He has gone above and behind, always putting our students first and the staff first, ensuring every decision is fiscally sound and supports our educational mission, and I thank you for that. The business aspect that Zach brings to the table is second to none, and we value his expertise tremendously. Zach is so much more than his job. He's an incredible professional, a savvy business whiz, and an amazing transportation guru. I think that's the favorite part of his day. Right, Zach? Excellent. Honestly, he's a dream colleague, and we are so lucky to have Zach here at Oyster Bay East Norwich and to have it on our team. This recommendation is all about recognizing Zach's incredible leadership and his deep knowledge, his passion, and his dedication to our students and to Oyster Bay. So, Zach, I will wait on the congratulations once the Board will go through. And at this point, I want to wish everybody and your family a wonderful, wonderful Thanksgiving. And at this point, I'd like to invite to the podium Ms. Erica Giopac to introduce some of our talented students, and we're looking forward to that. Ms. Giopac.
Good evening, everyone. This has been a very exciting month for the theater department. This past weekend, we just closed our fall play, Puffs, which was with our 7th- through 12th graders. I just wanted to share two really amazing statistics with you. We broke a couple of records. One in particular was our attendance to the performance. So last year, when we did the fall play, we had about 305 people attend over the course of the two nights, and this year, over the course of the two nights, we had 445 people attend, which was a 45% increase in attendance. So thank you to everyone who came out to support that. Their work really deserves to be seen. They work so, so hard. We also had an increase in our crew members and our cast members onstage, so we're really proud of that. And tonight, we welcome our youngest theater performers to the stage, and they are breaking records of their own. There are 410 students that attend Vernon, and in this year's musical production of Matilda, there are, get ready for this, 108 actors, 38 5th and 6th grade crew members, and 18 3rd and 4th grade painting and set design students, for a total of 164 students involved, which makes up 40% of Vernon's entire... There's this really beautiful line in Matilda, if you've ever read the books or seen the movie, that says, "Even if you're little, you can do a lot," and they really prove that every single day. So I just want to say a couple thank yous before we bring our students onstage. I want to thank the Board of Education and our central administration, our Oban Arts Foundation. We have some of the parents here with us tonight, Ms. Smith, Mr., and of course, the parents who get their children to and from rehearsal. I don't get to tell you that on the night of the show, so I want to tell you that now. And of course, the artistic team, and I'm going to ask them to stand and embarrass them. We'll start with Ms. Muller, who runs our stage crew backstage. We have Ms. Kemp, our assistant director. Mr. Casitas does the vocal and music direction. And Mr. Dolan up in the booth, and our high school Baman backstage members, in addition to our students, who run all the tech for the show. And of course, I cannot leave out the amazing, incredible Ms. Chia Party, who does it all. And while Ms. Chia Party comes up, I want to invite you all this Friday and Saturday at 7:00 PM. Vernon, you can get your tickets. I think Mr. Dolan's going to put up the QR code on the screen, so if you haven't already done that, you can scan and get your tickets, and we can't wait to see you then. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. Someone who stands at the size of five foot one, well, because my license says that, I believe in, although you're little, you can do a lot. So along with the students here, they've been working extremely hard on putting on a very large production this year, and we are super excited to give you just a taste of what it's like to be with them all the time. I do want to say that I am so proud of them because they had a very long tech rehearsal today, and they're still here tonight to perform. So we're so excited for this opportunity. Thank you so much, and all of your support is what allows us to do all of the incredible things we get to do at the arts. So thank you very much. I'm going to invite the students up onstage, but if I can ask all of you to come join us down in the audience, so that you have a wonderful view. We don't mean for this to be a spoiler alert, but we're going to kind of skip ahead to the fun part tonight. And I'm going to turn tonight's mic over to the Trunch Bowl, for those of you who haven't met her before. She is our headmistress, and let's just say she has a whistle. Things get scary.
Quiet, quiet, I say! Agatha Trunchbull, Crunchum Hall headmistress here. I will not have chaos before my eyes. Now then, what have we here? A gaggle of grimy children who seem to believe they can sing and dance their way through life? Ha! The very thought turns my stomach. And yet, tonight, you shall see what happens when discipline falters, when the rules crumble, and when the revolting little creatures rise up, a pack of insolent, ungrateful, loud-mouthed warts causing mayhem and mischief, exactly what I've always warned against. You are about to witness the most shocking display of rebellion ever to disgrace the school hall. Behold, the revolting children.
Never again will she get the best of me. Never again will she take away my freedom. And we won't forget the day we fought for the right to be a little bit naughty. Never again will it be bullied and doubted when my mommy says I'm a miracle. Never again, never again will we live behind bars. Never again, we know that we are revolting children living in revolting times. We sing revolting songs using revolting rhymes. We'll be revolting children till our revoltings done, and we'll have the Trunchbull bolting. We're revolting. Ah! We are revolting children living in revolting times. We sing revolting songs using revolting rhymes. We'll be revolting children till our revoltings done, and we'll have the Trunchbull bolting. We're revolting. We'll become a screaming whore. Take out your hockey stick and use it as a sword. Never again will we be ignored. We'll find out where the chocolate stores. And draw our pictures on the board. It's not insulting. We're revolting. We can asp how we like. If it goes wrong, wrong is right. Everyone, N-O-R-T-Y. Because we're a little bit naughty, so we're going to stay inside the lines. If we disobey, at the same time, the Trunchbull can do. She take our hammer and sh you! They didn't think you could push us too far, but there's no going back now. We are revolting. Revolting times! U-S-I-N-G. Songs! U-S-I-N-G. Rhymes! It is too late for you, we are revolting. We are revolting children living in revolting times. We sing revolting songs using revolting rhymes. Down, 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 down. It's too late for you, we are revolting.
Thank you so much, and if you want to see us cause just a little bit of chaos and some magic, we would love to see you this Friday and Saturday night at 7:00 at the Vernon Gymatorium.
Thank you so much. That was wonderful. So I'd like to provide the community with a financial update on the bond and the capital projects that we have completed, and just go over some of the financial aspect of it. Some of the slides that I will be using tonight are coming straight from a presentation that was presented to the Board of Education and the community when we presented the bond many years ago, four years ago. And one of the first slide that I remember presenting was about that there is something going on, which could be an opportunity, it could also be a problem at the same time. The problem could be that you have a change in the debt service line, and that could cause eventually a tremendous fluctuation on the tax levy, on the budget, and that could be a problem. The opportunity would be that you can bring another project at the same time, so there would be no change in the debt service, but at the same time, will be another project that would be presented. So when you look at the slide that was presented at that time, you see that the first three bars, they were pretty much depicting that the debt service that we had in place, which was ranging between $2.2, $2.3 million, and at the end, when that will come off, will go down to a 522 and change. And so that created like sort of a delta of about $1.7 million, and that change could have caused tremendous change in the levy because the debt service would be part of the calculation of the tax levy. So our main goal at that point was to look at every school and complete projects that could not have been completed with the regular budget or with the regular year-to-year budget. So when we look at the, starting from Theodore Roosevelt, we proposed the extension of Theodore Roosevelt to create some additional classrooms that eventually turned out to be a wonderful opportunity for our students and for our community, because right now, we have four sections of state-funded UPK. So you have students that are enrolled in a class that would be entering kindergarten using the same program that we're using in kindergarten, so the reading, the writing, and all the other wonderful stuff that they do. When you look at James Vernon, obviously, the construction of the new music wing, the renovation of the cafeteria, which was kind of due because that was one of the, I believe was the original cafeteria. And the other thing that we had going on with the cafeteria was that every morning, the custodial staff would have to put together, and this meant for the music performance and the rehearsal. The other thing was the renovation of the Butler Building and some of the renovation of the music rooms that turned out to be classrooms. At the high school, we had the turf field, the entrance to the facility and to the high school, and turf field and the 21st century classrooms, the broadcasting studio, and the innovation lab. Those were some of the areas. The goal has been all along to maintain a stable and predictable annual budget without a fluctuation in the levy. So when you look at the idea of a $30 million project, and you look at the different options that we have, one of the options would be to, if you have that amount of work to do, you would have one option would be to use the reserves, which it could be problematic because the reserves are limited, the amount is limited, and the amount that you can put every year in the reserve is obviously limited. And also, you want to use the reserves for some sort of emergency or something that comes up and goes quickly. In terms of, when you look at option two, the option two would be to borrow money. And when you think about borrowing money, you could do it in two ways. You can do it at any rate, which would be a problem because it would cause tremendous fluctuation in the levy if you bond at any rate. And the other option would be at a fixed amount, and that's what we had decided to do, what I presented to the board and eventually was approved, was to do it at a fixed amount, and the idea was to maintain the same debt service that we had in the past. So when we look at the voter, when we look at the vote, the voter basically approved with an overwhelming 65%, they approved the expenditure of up to $29,971,000, which means that we were approved to spend up to that amount, and that could have been bonded. So the community came loud and clear on that and gave us authorization to pay principal and interest and repay that, but not from, obviously, not from the reserves. The other piece that is important to keep in mind is that the debt service costs appear, it's something that comes up every year in the annual budget, the annual operating budget. So when you look at the overall stability, one of the things that we have done, we have been, in '23, '24, we began paying both interest and part of the principal using bands to reduce the future borrowing. And the other thing that we did, by making those additional payments, we were able to lower the amount that was going to be bonded later on. So the financial planning, which was something that we had to work with, obviously, the financial advisor, the financial planning was to make sure that the debt service remained the same around that $2.1 million mark, so it would not be a change in the overall, in the tax levy and eventually the calculation of the levy every year. So if you look at a bar graph as a continuation of the first graph, when you look at the blue bars, it would be the previous bond, the previous debt service. When you look at the red, it would be the new one that we began to pay, and then obviously the new bond, which is going to go on for the 15-year, and the red line would be the same amount that we pay every year. So when you look at the overall cost, just to give you a final summary, the project cost savings were approximately $2.6 million. That was done with, obviously, negotiation, weekly meetings, value engineer, there was done at every building. But when you look at the final bond that it was issued on 2020, in July of '25, so we had about, we bonded $24.5 million. So we had the $29 million, $29,971, with the $2.6 they were saving, and the other $2.9 they were paid already. So we have about $20.5 million that we bonded, and we're going to maintain the same amount of probably $2.1, which is a little bit lower than, a little bit lower than we used to pay. So I don't know if the board has any questions.
And Dr. Yanni, I would just like to clarify that municipalities throughout this country finance capital projects through bond projects because their, you know, their current budget, you know, could not withstand like major capital projects. So it's very common throughout the country to, when your bond, you know, your prior debt matures, to look at your schools, in this case, given the years they were built, knowing that you're going to have improvements. It's prudent at that time to issue a new financing. And just for those listening, you know, a band is a bond anticipation note. The purpose of that is to provide temporary financing during the construction period until you're ready to go out with your permanent financing. Some districts pay interest only during that period, but we made the decision to pay principal and interest during that period to ensure that our levy-to-levy was not volatile and also to reduce the permanent financing, which was financially prudent. It's also not financially prudent to use your reserves for capital projects because they really should be used for things that, for not necessarily always capital in nature other than your capital project reserve funds, which are used for things that you don't expect to happen, like your roof collapsing in the middle of a school year. So I just wanted to add clarification that this is very typical way to go out with the financing for capital projects.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Yanni. I'd now like to move on to the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes as listed and attached? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. We'll now move on to public participation of agenda items, opportunity for the public to be heard. In keeping with its, excuse me, in keeping with its philosophy of open communication and informed decision-making, the Board of Education welcomes input from the community. However, it's important to note that while the Board of Education meets in public, it is not a meeting of the public. Respectful input and behavior by each member of the community is appropriate and expected at all times and should observe the following rules at the Board of Education meetings. The Board of Education will listen to comments and input from the public. Debate between members of the audience and/or the board members will not be permitted. The Board will not address personnel or individual student matters in public. No person shall present orally or discuss at any Board of Education meeting charges or complaints against individual employees, directly or indirectly. The speaker shall identify themselves and confirm their residency in the district on the sign-in sheet. I believe one person signed in, Ms. Amri Longo.
$0.9 million that we paid from bands and where that money came from, that we paid down the bond.
Dr. Yanni, would you please provide an answer?
The $2.9 million for the bands came from the operating budget.
So from reserves? From what line on the operating budget did we find $2.9 million to pay that band? Can the community have an answer for that? The next board meeting.
Ms. Longo, we'll write down your question, and we'll provide you and the public with an answer.
The next board meeting?
We'll provide you with the answer before that and the community at the next board meeting. Thank you. Yep. Thank you, Ms. Longo. Now we're going to move on to approval of instructional personnel items. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District hereby approves the instructional personnel items as listed in their entirety. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. We will now move on to non-instructional personnel items. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District hereby approves the non-instructional personnel items as listed in their entirety. Do I have a motion?
Some.
A second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. We will now move on to the business items. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District hereby approves the business items as listed in their entirety. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We will now move on to special services. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District hereby approves the special services resolution as listed in their entirety. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We'll now move on to new business. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District hereby approves the new business resolutions as listed in their entirety. Do I have a motion?
Some.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments?
I would just like to thank the PTA for their donation for field trips, you know, it's much appreciated, given the fact that we removed field trips years ago from our budget. It's nice that our kids still get out and about for education.
Thank you, Ms. Santos.
And a thank you to the Booster Club for their donation to the college.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Lopez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. We'll now move on for the opportunity for the public to be heard on non-agenda items. Mr. Darren Jibosi?
My name is Darren Jibosi. I'm right here in Oyster Bay. I, I first want to thank you all on school board. I, I clearly understand the commitment of time and energy you all, you all make for this volunteer position. I don't think thank you is said enough, so I, I just want to say thank you. For the rest of my time, I do want to speak about AI, artificial intelligence. I believe AI is a powerful tool that should be embraced, and yet it's being villainized to our students as a cheat code that will get you penalized. I understand the state dictates a good majority of our curriculum, unfortunately, and I also understand the critical thinking that is needed for development for all students up to a certain age, but I would bet all of you use AI on a daily basis. I know I do. Maybe it's the simplest form like Alexa, order write emails, review contracts, and even coding. So I'd, I'd say it's safe to say it's here to stay. I remember a few years ago when retail stores were opening to teach our children coding. It was a skill that was needed for the future, that they would be left behind if they didn't have that skill. That's clearly not the case anymore. In fact, the only aspect of coding is developing algorithms for AI. I have a quick case study I wanted to share with you. One of my children had to read a book for class and write a report discussing different aspects of the story. They did both. And when I looked at the report, while I thought they made excellent points, I thought it was worded a little rough. And I said, I think you should run it through an AI program, see the difference, see where you can make improvements as a learning tool. It made the changes, they learned a few novat, new vocabulary words along the way, cut and paste their final project into their Chromebook and submitted it and received a zero. Because our AI tracker tool showed that he was in his Chromebook for only a minute with one cut and paste, and he couldn't have possibly done this work by himself. When he asked why, he was told that reason of the AI tracker tool caught him cheating. So he read the book, wrote the paper, utilized the tool to check or fine-tune, as you would a calculator, to check your math, and was penalized for it, for something that we all use today. It's not about his grade. We worked through that. It just got me thinking. And since universities like UPenn, MIT, Stanford, all offer AI as a major, I got me thinking, why not us? Why not now? So here's my question to the administration and school board. I know usually around this time by year-end, there's a curriculum review and presentation at a board meeting. I would ask you to think about how we integrate AI into our curriculum, teach the benefits, all types of AI, maybe even an elective class, as opposed to villainizing it. Thank you for your time. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Jibosi.
Thank you.
Next would be Ms. Amri Longo.
Could you just direct me, give me the direction of where people should do, answer a survey on the banners? And did you receive emails regarding the banners to the school board?
Dr. Iani, would you be able to provide her a direction of where?
Do we know what the, it was sent by?
Well, okay. Mr. Iano? Thank you.
Could you stop the clock? Where, where do we, where can people find the survey? That's all right. I'm not that worried.
Ms. Iano, could you explain whether... Can you, can you ask all your questions?
So, well, the banner, where can we find the survey? Community, that people who are not parents in school, number one. Did the Board of Education receive any correspondence regarding the banners? And then, is it in, when it comes time to negotiation of a superintendent's contract, is that discussed prior to putting it on the board agenda with every single board member? What the changes are going to be in that contract? And I guess I'm curious as to, because I looked over the last nine, seven years, oh, close to seven years, contracts. I'm curious on how the school board of Oyster Bay gave a contract to the superintendent for five years, which is normal, five-year running, went in, in a month after they gave him the contract and changed it, went in the following year and changed contract salaries for years that were already agreed upon and increased them, and continually done, has done that over the last seven years. The community is looking, you amended the contract last board meeting, and the community is looking to see what was amended to that contract. We pay, he's a public employee, we have the right to that contract. Unless it's going over the five-year term, it does not have to go to the state, it's all done by you, it's approved by you, and it should be public knowledge right away. I, I don't know why we are waiting weeks with numerous foils to see a contract that comes from our tax dollars. And we're making you people stewards of it? It's not a secret, though. It's a public contract. You should be proud of it, and we should be able to see it, and yet I know three people, if not more, have asked for it in foils since October 28th, and no one has received an answer.
Thank you for all your questions. Ms. Iano, could you answer the question regarding the banners in case any community, community members would like to?
Yes, absolutely. So it's gone out in several different ways. It's gone out, the principals put on their weekly bulletin to parents, it's gone out, or if it hasn't already, it will be going out on social media. There's been more than one Parents' Square message where not only does it go to families of the community, any guest who signed up for our Community Blast Parents' Square can also get it. You don't have to have a child in school to get that. And all of that information will also be on the Observer that goes out in print. I don't know the exact date off the top of my head, but within the next week or two, in print, it's going to hit all mail, mailboxes in our community, which will have the QR code for them to link, will have the information, as well as the information to sign up for the Parents' Square on the back page.
Great. Thank you very much.
So there's one email. The district clerk just said there was one email received by the board.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much. Todd Cronin?
So, Todd Cronin, East Norwich, sat where everybody was sitting. I just find it a little alarming that the CSCA would send out a notification if it is actually from them.
The community can hear.
What do we do? Bring it up? All right, that thing?
He will.
Sorry. She was short. There we go. Um, thank you. There we go. All right. So I find it a little bit alarming if this is actually true, if the CSCA sent out a notification to rally, which was supposed to be tonight, which was, I guess, canceled. I don't know, you shake your head, you don't know. That, that, that an administrator here would be bullying and intimidating district people who work here? I don't think it's funny. I mean, you're sitting there giggling about it. I really don't think it's funny, Dr. Iani. You're sitting there smirking about it. It's really not funny. Because if this is true, this is bad for our district. It really is. If you have an administrator that's bullying and intimidating employees here, I think that's terrible, if that's true. And you're going to sit there and smirk at me? No, you did. Yeah. And then, you lay off two, you terminate two grounds crew people, you hire two, and then here we are with a 48-page lawsuit against the district, correct? Nobody read it? You didn't read it? You're the attorney. You didn't read this? No? Okay.
I didn't say it. I responded.
Okay. Thank you. And then along with, what's funny again? I don't know, it must be funny today. What? And then, you talk about your contract, when you got hired in '21, and I guess you're looking to get your 10 years, is that what was said? So you would probably extend your contract another two years till 2031. So you're averaging about, what, 2% increases all the way through? Roughly? Is that correct? Like, looking at the numbers here, from 360 all the way down to 389, I guess it comes out to about 2% each year? But I know everybody's been foiling it, and no answers on your contract? No? Okay.
You're weird for me to ask.
I don't know. I don't know. Usually you smirk at me. All right. So, all right, thank you anyway, though. Your answers.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. I would now, I would now like to make a motion to convene to executive session to discuss collective negotiations. Do I have a motion?
Some.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you all for attending the meeting. Have a good evening.